Okay, we'll call the order this Board of Commissioners of Utah County meeting. October 22nd at 2:14 PM. We'll start this meeting with a prayer reading or thought by Gina Tanner and Adam Beck will lead us in the pledge.
Our dear gracious heavenly father, we're grateful for the opportunity that we have together here together for this county commission meeting. We're grateful for all of the elected officials who strive to keep our county safe and to provide the best service they can for the citizens. We pray that we will have the best interests of the citizens at heart as we discuss matters that are pertaining to their safety and their well being, as well as the services that we provide to them. Again, we're grateful for all that we have and we say these things humbly in the name of thy son Jesus Christ, amen.
And thank you Gina.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Adam. Okay. On the consent agenda. There's thirty-six items. Item twenty-six for me. Any of the others?
Twenty-six, no.
Not seeing any.
And the regular agenda.
Rod, I assume you want eleven. Twelve, thirteen.
So we will, yeah, we'll table twelve till after closed, right?
I did want to ask a question on item number one on the regular agenda.
Okay, so one, hold one. And.
Eleven and twelve.
Holding.
Oh, sorry, eleven and thirteen.
Eleven and thirteen.
Tabling twelve.
Table twelve. Fourteen. And then just wanted to highlight six and seven. Thank you for the consideration of lowering the eye protection to have two new applicants. See that? And then as far as closed, holding fifteen, striking sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
Okay, we will hold on from the consent agenda, number twenty-six. On our regular agenda, we will hold number one, number eleven, number thirteen, number fourteen, and we will table number twelve until after the meeting, until after the closed meetings. On our close, we will hold number fifteen and strike number sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
Thank you. Okay, number one, Lance, or?
Twenty-six consent, yours.
Oh, excuse me, thank you. The twenty-six consent mainly just wanted to highlight, I don't really have any questions. Richard and I were in a meeting yesterday and just this, this is really as a result of the warming center and the efforts that are taking place for our homeless community. And my main reason for holding this today is just all of the efforts of our public works. Our engagement has been good and I want to thank them for helping us with with tasks like this. Just moving a bus stop, you wouldn't think would be that big of a deal, just not even a football field, if you will. And yet, you know, it's a big deal for safety and it's a big deal. To only highlight, this is one of many situations, just getting a facility ready to be able to help our homeless community have a warm place to sleep during the night. So thank you, Richard and your staff and and that was my opportunity to highlight that. Item one, donation to the sheriff's office for.
Twenty-six has to get voted on. But also you won't thank yourself, so I'll thank you for your efforts on that. I'm fortunate that we needed to foot the cost of that. That was a cost that the county bear that should have been buried by UTA. But we don't have time to wait, so we had to take care of it. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna echo that. Once again, Commissioner Gordon, you have done a phenomenal job leading our efforts here. And we could not have done it without your efforts. And I love the no nonsense, get it done attitude of our public works. And once again, it is frustrating that we had to pay to do that, but but we were willing to and and I appreciate the effort of public works and both you, Commissioner Gordon.
Thank you.
And the vendor, actually they're like coming from another project to help us. So that's very helpful as well. I would that I'll move to approve item number twenty-six on consent.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, now, moving on to item one. Thank you. Ahead of myself.
Yeah, so I I had a question on item one. Not that I have a problem with the donation, I'm good with it. I just want to make sure that there are ongoing costs for this. I know that a purchase of a canine, it's great that we're getting that donated, but there is, there's a lot of ongoing costs and I want to make sure that those are accounted for.
Yeah, Ben Benoy, County Attorney's Office. This donation does not consider those ongoing costs, but the sheriff's office has confirmed that they have the resources available to take care of those ongoing costs after the purchase of the animal.
After the purchase of the animal, it's already in their budget, their current budget and their twenty-twenty-six budget that they've already submitted, those costs are considered.
That's what I've been informed of, yes.
Okay. I've got no problem with that and I'm okay making the motion to approve item number one. Just wanted to make sure that we had considered those costs.
Yeah, it's, I looked into it. It's kind of cool. Some wealthy lady in Oregon who buys canines for sheriff's offices all over the country. So kudos to her. And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Okay. Item eleven.
Okay, you've all seen the tentative budget Gina sent out with all the details. I'm just going to go through some highlights for you. And I'm gonna start with the revenue side. There's, I just caught an error or I didn't change something on the first slide, which is.
Hopefully you found some money.
At the end, well, there's a positive outlook here. So just do the old one. Okay, so for revenue, sales tax is projected to go up two point nine percent over this year's budgeted revenue. Historically, our growth has been in the three to ten percent range. I threw out the COVID years because those were not reasonable. On property tax, we're projecting a two point three percent growth over the twenty twenty twenty-five budget. Historically, that's been four to seven percent. Note, an outside consultant was used developing these projections and he gave us like a high mid-low. We would go with a low on the tentative. We just don't have enough data like on sales tax to be confident. Property tax, we just went with the low side, I think. On the upside, there'll be upside in both those numbers that we can adjust when we, before we get to the final, so we can get a few more million there. When Gina's team and I want to thank her team for all the work they did on this. They visited every department, talked about their fee revenue, looked at at one, three, five, ten-year projections, came up with what they thought was reasonable. They went to the departments, the departments agreed on the number that was selected. So the departments are all okay with the fee revenues that we're projecting for the year. And those shouldn't shift a whole lot, if at all. I have threw in a couple charts here to show the historical sales tax growth. You can see that in the COVID years, it was quite high. And we're currently year-to-date, we're at four point seven percent of growth over last year. Our projections were in the two point six percent range. So we're gonna, we'll likely end the year a million or more higher. I shouldn't say likely. We could end a million or more higher than we budgeted. If we based it, based our increase that's showing in the tentative on where I think we're gonna land at the end of the year, we only have a one point two percent increase built into our tentative budget. If we, if we get close to the year end and we're confident, we should move that to two point nine percent of what we think we're gonna land at the end of the year. So that might get another million or two-ish for next year's budget that we don't currently have visible. If we look at property tax growth, it's been high historically. The last few years it has dropped as interest rates have gone up and and people aren't purchasing new homes and builders aren't building. We're budgeting a two point three percent growth. I can see room on your end to to raise that to maybe three in the final budget. So there's a little bit more money. On the expense side, there's a general fund expense increase of three point six percent. Health Department is their other big department. It has a one point seven percent increase. On materials and services, there's a two point five percent increase in there and that reflects just cost of goods, etc. That we, there isn't a lot of wiggle room there, or else I wouldn't wiggle there. HR used outside consultant, we use an outside consultant and came up with a five point two percent wage and benefit increase. I think HR is relooking at that and may come in with a lower wage and benefit increase. So you're, you'll have some money on the less expense side to to fund additional activities. If we're looking at general fund transfers, we're looking at about two hundred and eighty thousand going into the capital improvement plan. That's what we had left on our conservative revenue and conservative meaning higher expense budget. The Children's Assistance Center is gonna need about a, about two million dollars and the health department could need up to eight point three million dollars, although the budget team is looking at some numbers now that might affect that ask for next year.
But on that SIP number, the zero point two eight.
Yes.
What's the total that represents?
Two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Basically.
That that was left after we did the baseline plus salary and benefits we ended up with and our conservative revenue. That's what we left, we ended up with.
That's when no supplemental approves.
Right. So that's again, using the conservative revenue and the higher than on the high set of reasonable expenses. And so we just put that into CIP because we didn't want to tie your hands with anything. Now, I, I, I want to point out and we'll have discussions with you individually later on, that over the last eight, eight to ten years, we have often budgeted into using fund balance and at the end of the year needed, needed less or none of fund balance. But putting it in there, I'll give you some examples. There's one year that we were, we budgeted six and we ended up three out of fund balances. One, another year we budgeted eleven and we ended up eleven from fund balance and we ended up using three. So we were, we were eight million, their differential was eight million. In twenty twenty-four, we budgeted nine million in fund balance usage and ended up using none, or forty-seven thousand. So it's, in my view, it's okay to budget using fund balance, knowing that we, we're almost always gonna have salary savings. I'll get to.
Should, should we be?
And by almost always, you mean always, always, because there's never been a time that we haven't, right?
Yes, I'm just hedging to be, yeah, almost, almost always means always, always.
Well, in your opinion, should we be, should we be budgeting a fund balance one year after a tax increase, like? What's your thoughts on that?
Can you ask the question differently?
Yeah, so this is our first year of the tax increase.
Yes.
Should we be budgeting into twenty twenty-six, one year into the increase, using fund balance to operate?
Yes, because we were basing it off of the twenty twenty-five budget, which had the tax increase in it. And now we're saying, okay, here's the differential between where we're at now and where we think we'll be next year. And I, I wouldn't have any heartburn about budgeting into the fund balance because we, we typically do that. It's not atypical. And it's just, I, I think it's, it's wise to be conservative on both ends. And this year, we were able to, for example, cover the costs related to the assassination out of our current fund balance and we're still gonna have some salary and benefits budgeted at the end of the year. So we didn't have to reopen the budget to get money for the defense attorney. It just makes operations a lot smoother when you, when you have wiggle room to cover emergencies. Nobody could have anticipated that additional cost, but we had the money. The nice thing, and I'll, this is a very positive thing in my mind. When we budget, let's say last in twenty twenty-four, we budgeted nine million and didn't end up using any of it. To me, that says we're being very responsible in how we use the money. We're only using what we really need, not what we could spend, because we, you could have authorized spending all of it, it was in the budget. But a lot of that money is in restricted, that comes back to your control anyway. It's just there if we need it, which this year we did and it, and and we just sailed on through. It didn't cause any commotion. When that happened, we were able to find the money and move on. We do have a, you know, our fund balances are maxed out generally and they're there for emergencies. So I think balance, balancing the budget using fund balance, knowing that you're not gonna need all of it is, is just a good, it's a practice that makes operating the county run smoothly. Now, whether you spend it all or not, that's another thing. And again, we typically have not, I shouldn't say typically, the last eight years have not spent fund balance that we didn't, we hadn't had, we didn't have to increase fund balance expenses. So I, I think I just, it doesn't concern me. I'm real conservative, just, you know, I'm so cheap. I've loosened up a little bit in my age, but I've always been super, super cheap. But, you know, I, I'll show you, you know, just let's look at the charts. Again, you know, we're, we're budgeting on the sales tax or the property tax revenue, two point three percent increase in in new growth. When we're likely, we're gonna be in the three range, if you were to ask me to just.
Yeah, in fact, I was gonna ask about that. Rod, would you be willing? Well, first, on your slide where you talk about the revenue growth projections, the, it does say twenty twenty-five. Did you mean twenty twenty-six for your growth projections on that slide?
On that side, it's over the twenty twenty-five budgeted numbers.
Okay, yeah, it says in the twenty twenty, okay, so the twenty, that's the three point eight over the twenty twenty-five numbers, okay.
The twenty twenty-five numbers. We, we had some changing in words there and that's where it landed. So it was over at one point. But it, the intent is that that's over the budgeted number and the budgeted number is typically gonna be lower than actual. So.
Yeah. Would you be willing to share? Would you be willing to share your projections? Because I know that you had said the consultant gave you like a high, medium and low. And you, for revenue numbers, you took the low and for budget numbers, you took the high. So you're being ultra-conservative on that.
Yes.
But I'm wondering if you'd be willing to share those original numbers. I tend to find that I, like, your risk tolerance may be different than mine and I'm willing to take the middle number in a lot of those cases. So I would love to see what the middle number was on both revenues and project and.
I will forward those to you. I just don't have them off the top of my head right now. But I will, and we'll get an update. We get monthly updates from him. And so I think it would be smart maybe to wait for the October one, then I'll ask him to update those based on what he knows now, which is, you know, it changes every month.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I think you're seeing those numbers for twenty twenty-six would be helpful. And thank you for your work on this. I know that the tentative budget is a statutory requirement of the auditor's office and it is just tentative. I appreciate you and thank you for presenting it and helping us understand that you took the very, very low estimate for revenues and the very high estimate for budgets. That is very helpful as we take it from here and and look to propose our budgets for the year.
And if, if I were in your shoes, I would soften my stance. I'm just taking the most conservative to give you wiggle room going forward. So there's, there's more money, I think, than than is in the tentative. Now, for twenty twenty-five highlights, let me point out that the budget team took a recent look at the health department and general fund salaries. And even after we funded the unanticipated assassination cost, year-to-date, we have five hundred thousand dollars of unused money in the health department and one point six million in the general fund. And you could view health department as general fund because we, we put money into health department. So we're gonna end up with two points, one million or more left in salary savings, even after we've covered the extra costs for this year. We are reviewing other general fund budgets to see if there isn't other extra stuff, because I would recommend that if we have a balance this, at the end of this year, that we put it into the capital improvement plan. Because it, that's a future cost that we're gonna have to pay and the more we put in now, the less we have to put in later. And then there, again, there remains a lot of variability in the sales tax numbers. And I'll, I'll get an update tonight. I was hoping to have it today, but I should get an update on sales tax numbers for August. And you'll have those new numbers tomorrow sometime, I would think. Okay? So that's just the highlights from it. They, they did balance, they did do a lot of work and they're ready to serve you in, in terms of, okay, where can we find additional money for next year? So I'm giving you the baseline. And like I said, there is, there is upside and we'll help you with the upside. Any questions?
No.
Thank you, Rod. That was very helpful.
Yeah, your staff has been very helpful to meet with us and to help us along the way and been very, very good. Our budget meetings are very productive and Gina's keeping us on task in those, so kudos to.
And I want to thank them for, they have done the yeoman's work this year and crossed eyes and dotted, crossed Ts and dotted Is and I really appreciate the extra effort. And their confidence. I know Gina's been stressed, but I hope today that she's gonna at least have a, a stress-free afternoon and then she'll be stressed next week.
Well, I think it'll be before next week because she's meeting with me tomorrow morning at eight AM.
Okay, well, maybe it's not even a stress-free afternoon. I amend my suggestion Friday afternoon. You can relax. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments for?
No.
Rod, okay. I'll entertain a motion on item eleven.
A motion to approve item eleven.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. We table twelve, thirteen.
Yeah, item thirteen. We are sending a letter. It is UTA's budget season as it is ours. And they have a public comment open till November seventh. So this letter is us opining on that budget. It is a very maintenance-heavy budget, which we all understand, things have to get paid. So they're replacing a lot of vehicles and buses and tracks, cars and all those things. But unfortunately, the three new service projects, none of them are in Utah County. We had forty-three percent of the state's growth last year. Traffic is our residents' number one concern. We hear it every single day. Commissioner Garner and I live it every single day in Wesley High and it, it's, not only is it an inconvenience, it's a safety concern. Pony Express Light was out last week, or two weeks ago, and it took residents three hours from city center to the freeway. So I can only imagine a earthquake, a fire. It's just totally unacceptable. So obviously, public transit is a key piece in alleviating some of that traffic. I think the ultimate goal is to, you know, have dedicated shoulder buses and those kind of things. Because in this situation, the bus would just be sitting in traffic along with everybody else. And I think in order to be effective and drive ridership, all of this money we're investing into new roads, having dedicated shoulders will help people use the bus. But that would require bus service. So Eagle Mountain was promised for this coming April to have a dedicated route into city center. That is not on the twenty twenty-six budget. I think it needs to be. Lehigh, Wesley High and the track station, Thanksgiving Point area was promised a on-demand system. This April, that is not on the twenty twenty-six budget and I think it needs to be. So that's kind of where this comes from. It's more so us offering our opinion on the budget, not so much a rebuke of UTA. We have good relationship with trustee Azerson and we are willing to work. I've had several meetings with him over the last couple months and his team there at UTA. We have fifth-fit dollars that we have pledged to get some of these projects done much more timely than is on their schedule. And I think those need to be responded to more effectively. So this letter is not a rebuke of UTA. It's just us saying, hey, we're the fastest county and we need to see some projects in twenty twenty-six.
I appreciate you taking the lead on this. I mean, I know, you know, Commissioner Gardner and I have sat on the local advisory council and and we take this active role just to make sure that the dialogue's open and we're continuing the conversations to better our transit situation. As you point out, you're asking for public comment and during this period, we're giving it and and I, I don't think anybody should be offended at collaboration and conversation. And that's what we're living in right now during budget season, isn't it? Like, we, we all get in the room and we might not like each other's answers, but we, we have an attitude of not taking our ball and going home after we might be offended by something. So this is us, this is our crack at getting, getting more attention in our area, especially your area. Yeah, so I appreciate you right.
Which will be, which will be the South, you know, in ten years.
Well, and, and I point out local advisory council and we lose two mayors this year who are not seeking reelection that have been voices for many, many, many years with our, helping bridge the gap with UTA. So we need to continue to keep those lines of communication open with them.
Yeah, absolutely. And I want to add to that, that, I mean, two things. One is that's what the people of Utah County elect us to do, is to be advocates for Utah County and to ensure that those state resources recognize how fast we're growing and the problems that our citizens are facing. And that's what we're doing here. The second thing is, we, we're not just sitting back and complaining. We were the first county to enact the fifth fifth. And we did that because we recognized we literally have the worst traffic in the state. And so we went, we went forward, we led the charge, we, we passed the fifth fifth so that we could put our local dollars into expanding transit to help with our traffic issue, to help our citizens with the issues they told us they care about. So we have, we have done our part here. We have money available. We want to partner with UTA and this is us elevating that message.
Okay, I will, a motion to approve item thirteen.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And item fifteen, fourteen, excuse me, Commissioner Gardner. I had a conversation with Fairfield Mayor. I'm not quite there yet on this, but I'll let you tell me your thoughts.
Yeah. So I've been working, yeah, I've been working with the, with the airpark, recognizing that the airpark has become part of an inland port project that the state has designated. With that inland port project, I think there's going to become, there's a lot of, a lot of commerce is gonna be coming. And to further our last conversation, there's a lot of traffic on those roads. And this air mobility, this. And this, um, air mobility, this advanced air mobility will allow us to move goods and services in and out of that inland port without putting more trucks on the road and making traffic even worse. Um, I do recognize that, that, you know, you had said that the mayor had reached out to you with some concerns. I'm, I am committed to continuing to work with the air park to make sure that they have crossed the Ts and dotted the Is. Um, they do have an LLC that is active with the state, that has received funding, millions of dollars of funding from the state to do airstrips. They also have a nonprofit out there that, that works with their community. And I will commit to working with them to ensure that their Ts are crossed and their Is are dotted. But we do have a time, a, a time restraint on this. So, I would hope that we can pass this today, uh, even without your vote, so that we can get them the letter and then continue to work with them before the funding comes in.
Um, yeah, so, I mean, it was unfortunate, the quick turnaround. But, um, as I went through it and, uh, thank you to Commissioner Garner and, and her office for making some edits that I requested. Um, it's non, you know, it's, it's non-binding. Um, it's not saying I pick one side or the other, uh, because obviously, the dispute between the air park and Fairfield is, is, needs to be resolved. Um, and, and I, I'm optimistic we can get there. Um, but I also don't wanna lose out on, uh, economic opportunity. Um, I, I feel the letter is good enough to say, we are totally interested in exploring this. We'd love your investment into this. Um, and it's not binding, like I said, it's not, it's not me picking a side between Fairfield or the air park. Um, so, I, I'm comfortable with, um, passing it as it is.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve item number fourteen then.
Uh, second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Aye. That passes two to one. Thank you. Okay.
How's it feel to be on that end?
Is that a dad joke?
I know it very well.
You're funny.
Um, I would, I would like to take a moment of personal privilege and point out that we did three big things today. And each one of them was led by a different commission office. Um, and, you know, Commissioner Gordon's office has done the homeless. Commissioner Beltran's office led on the UTA letter. My office led on the economic development for the air park. I just, it, it is really good for us to see all three offices taking the lead on issues, working on issues, um, so that we can divide and conquer and get things done for our county. That is, that has not been the case the whole time that I've been on the commission. And so, it's fantastic to see three hard-working, dedicated commissioners working hard for the people of Utah County. Um, and this agenda, I think, really highlighted that. So, I wanna thank my peers, I'm thanking both Commissioners Beltran and Gordon for that and, um, and the fact that we can get things done for Utah County, even when we don't all agree and it seems to rotate, who doesn't agree? That's fine. This is why we elect three distinctly different individuals. So, thank you.
You're welcome, all said. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the county commission at this time?